I would call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October 20th, 2023, through posting a notification of the press in accordance with the Wisconsin State Statute 1984. First, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Millard?
Thank you, President Hayward. It's my pleasure to introduce the Principal of Marshall Middle School, Henry Schmelz. Mr. Schmelz has been a middle school principal at two separate school districts for 15 years before joining the Janesville School District as the Principal of Marshall in 2020. Hank has been in education for more than 30 years. He received his Bachelor's Degree in Social Studies Teaching License from California State University Sacramento. He taught social studies in the middle and high schools in Rancho Cardoza, California in 1995. Mr. Schmelz earned his Master's Degree in School Administration and entered the world of administration in 1997 in Modesto, California. In 2002, Hank and his wife moved to Wisconsin to reconnect with his wife's Wisconsin roots. Mr. Schmelz, who do you have with you this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner Millard. I have with me two fantastic student leaders. I have both Maddie McClellan and Grace Groom. They're both 7th grade students at Marshall, both serve on our Student Council. Maddie currently's favorite class is choir. It used to be social studies, and I taught that, so I'm a little disappointed. She, when she's not at school, she enjoys time with Benny, the golden labradoodle, who's six months old. I asked her if she's gonna be a service dog. She says, "Not quite yet." And, and she dreams of being a DJ and currently has three songs that you can find on Apple Music. And I also have with me Grace Groom, again, another two-year Student Council member. And she loves vocal jazz and correctly, social studies. And she goes home to her terrier mixed pebbles. And her dream is to be a lawyer in both human and animal rights. And her ultimate dream is to serve on the United States Supreme Court. So anyway, with that, girls, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good luck in what you're both gonna do in the future. All right. I will call to order the budget hearing of the 2023-2024 proposed district budget for the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on October 20th, 2023, through posting a notification of the press in accordance with the Wisconsin State Statute 1984. I have one comment, one citizen comment, from Mr. Tom Lipinski. If you don't mind, state your name and address, please, for the record.
Tom Lipinski, 1828 North Hawthorne Park Drive in Janesville. To start with, I guess I would offer a suggestion. Looking at the agenda, I'm wondering if the budget hearing can be moved to after Finance Director McCray's presentation in future years. I guess I have a lot of questions in reviewing the information. The major question is, I see we have a $10 million increase in the FEN, Fund 10, property tax levy going from 30 to 40 million. Wondering how that happened? I'm assuming the $4 million factors in, as well as the $325 student increase, as well as other inflationary factors. I noticed business administration is up 7 million, and there's 6 million in additional revenue from the DPI Special Projects Grant. The debt service levy is done, down, but we obviously are pre-refunding. You know, I'm wondering, in terms of the mill rates, if those have been adjusted? If the prior year, the 741 is adjusted for the effect of the revaluation in the city of Janesville, which encompasses the majority of the tax base for the school district of Janesville. I guess if I look at it, I'm seeing about a $15 million increase in revenue, but it doesn't appear that any of that, or a very small portion, ends up in fund balance. You know, so I think I'm looking for answers, hopefully, in the presentation tonight as to where it went. You know, hopefully, it all just didn't go poof and disappear. Don't know if some of that is budgeted, you know, if we've budgeted conservatively that come 12 months from now, if that might end up in fund balance, and you can use that for the needs in the 2425 budget or not. So yeah, I'm looking forward to Mr. McCray's presentation and hopefully get some good answers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consider a motion to adopt... Sorry. I'm going to adjourn the budget hearing. Consider a motion to adopt the 2020, October 2020, October 24, 2023 Board of Education Agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Arter, second by Commissioner Myers. Thank you. I wanna get with it. All those in favor? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 9-0. Everybody's here tonight. All right, that hasn't happened a little bit. Consider approval of the consent agenda.
It's okay, sorry, I have to talk softer. So when I researched the month of October, I found out that it was National School Bus Safety Week, the third week in October, so that was just last week. So I thought I would review what the National Association for Pupil Transportation has to say about school bus safety, which I found interesting because they reported that school bus transportation, more than 25 million children ride this yellow school bus every day. I was kind of astonished by that number. And National School Bus Safety Week serves as a reminder for students, parents, teachers, and the community to keep school bus safety in the forefront of our minds. So I'm very happy to hear that they recognize that every October of the year. So some tips that I'd like to share with you for everyone involved, whether you're a parent, a student, a grandma, grandfather, who helps little kiddos, middle school students, or even high school students get on that yellow school bus every day to get to school, some important tips. So getting ready for school. Have your children put everything they carry in a backpack or school bag so they won't drop things along the way. Never want to have a little fumble along the way that takes them off the sidewalk and into the street. Encourage them to wear bright contrasting colors. Maybe that might be easier for some parents rather than others for their little kiddos, so they will be more easily seen by drivers. And make sure children leave home on time so they can arrive at the bus stop before it is due, ideally at least five minutes early, because running after or in front of a school bus is obviously dangerous. Walking to the bus stop, walk young children to the bus stop, or encourage children, obviously, to walk in groups. There is obviously safety in numbers. Groups are easier for drivers to see as well. And practice good pedestrian behavior. Walk on the sidewalk, and if there is no sidewalk, stay out of the street. If you must walk in the street, walk single file, face the traffic, and stay as close to the edge of the road as you can. And stop, and look left, right, and then left again if you must cross the street. That is something I will never forget that my parents taught me. Thought it was a little bit ridiculous when I was younger, but I obviously, with age, understand it better now as an adult. So do the same thing at driveways and alleyways. So just a few tips on national school safety bus.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, 3.3, student presenter. We have three tonight. Lucy, with Arise.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lucia Liscano, and I'm a 7th grader at Arise Virtual Academy. This is my first year at Arise. I previously was at an in-person school. Last year was pretty hard for me. It was a big change from elementary school. My family, my family and I decided that we needed a change and wanted to give Arise a try. At first, I was really worried. I thought it was going to be like when COVID was happening. I wouldn't be able to hang out with kids my own age or make friends at all. And I would miss the friends I already had. You might not know, but in 7th grade, life is all about friends. My first week at Arise, I made so many friends, and every Tuesday, we meet up at the Arise Lab, and we do homework together. We also get to do other fun things at the lab, like make things on the 3D printer or the Glowforge. I made these at Arise. Besides all of that, we get to go on a field trip once a month. We have already gone to the JSOL, Skelly's Pumpkin Farm, and to play at JPAC. Today, we brought our pumpkins into the lab and decorated them. It was so much fun. We're having a contest. If you win, you get one out, one of your homework assignments and win cash. Our next field trip, we're going to the library, then the Humane Society, and finishing off at the Milton House Museum. Another great thing about Arise is I can participate in the things I love, like show choir and musicals at Edison. Now let me tell you about the important stuff in my education. At Arise, I'm getting one-on-one support from Mrs. McMahon, our reading specialist. I have never gotten help like this before. Mrs. Matthews is my teacher, and I have for all of my subjects. My kid, my class only has about 10 kids in it. There are no disruptions in class, which before, there were a lot of disruptions all day long. I feel like I've gotten to know a lot about the people in my class, as well as my teacher. The schoolwork can be hard sometimes, but I think in the end, I'm learning so much more virtually. I can't wait to see how the rest of the year goes. Now, I would like to introduce my mom, Megan Liscano.
Hello, everyone. My name is Megan Liscano. Last year, I got an inside view of how my daughter's day-to-day life was like in person at middle school, because I was a lunch helper at her school. First, I would like to say that all of Lucy's teachers were great. I don't have one thing bad to say about the teachers in our district. The problem I saw was terrible behavioral, behaviors from other kids. Teachers were spending more time on what I'd like to call parenting than rather, than teaching. My daughter was in an environment where she couldn't learn effectively. There was constantly something happening, if not in the classroom, in the hallway. Her first week in school, she was hit in the head by an 8th grader who thought it would be funny. It was luckily caught on camera, and she, and he was later suspended. When Lucy came home from school, we'd ask about her day. Her dad and I would get an earful about how, who did what during the day, instead of what she learned during the day. Every day, I came home with a new story, and so did Lucy. I know this problem isn't just at our district. It's happening everywhere. At the end of the year, we decided that we had enough and started to explore our options. Through word of mouth, I heard about Arise Virtual Academy. I was hesitant to explore virtual learning because I didn't want to isolate Lucy from other kids, but I knew I did not want to keep her where she was at. I spoke with Dr. Hernandez on the phone, and my first question to her was, "Do you have a lot of behavioral issues at your school?" And her answer was, "Absolutely not." She went on to tell me about their program. Lucy and I talked it over and decided to give Arise a go. Arise has been a great change for Lucy. I'm not gonna lie, it's a lot of work, and you have to be really involved in your kid's education. I do have to help her from time to time with her homework, and I have to make sure that she's staying on track with her assignments. I talk to her teacher, Mrs. Matthews, frequently, and she lets me know how Lucy is doing. Her teacher is available all day to help students if they need it, and they are also available by text directly. I feel like I know so much more about what's going on in my kids' learning every day than I ever have. Lucy has always struggled with reading. At in-person school, she was given small group reading to help her. Now she gets one-on-one support, a half-hour day, from a reading specialist named Mrs. McMahon. I'm looking forward to see how much her reading skills were improved by the end of the year. We are so happy that there are other options out there for Lucy to get the education she needs without all the other distractions. I want to thank you for your time tonight, and Lucy would like to remind you to get on Arise's Facebook page and vote for the pumping contest. There's a lot at stake.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucy. You did a great job. And generally, we don't have the parents contribute to speaking, but that you did a great job, and thank you for coming tonight, Lucy.
Thank you.
From Rock River Charter, Elijah.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Elijah Pruitt. I am in the Alt Ed Program at Rock River Charter School. I'd like to take this moment to share the story of my journey at Charter. Charter currently has an enrollment of 252 students with 138 applicants eager to join. Charter has a success rate of 98.51%, with me and many other students looking to add to that. 80% of our students come from families that rely on free and reduced lunch programs. Despite this, these students still succeed, thanks to the amazing people at Rock River Charter. Freshman year, I had a dispute with a teacher which led to me being put on pre-expulsion. That summer, when I felt hopeless, I gave my life to Christ and got accepted into Charter. I was nervous but extremely excited for my new journey in my life. The journey has been amazing so far, and I'd like to thank these people for it. I'd like to give thanks to Amy, Rebecca, and Betsy, and Lindy for helping me so far. Amy has helped shape me into an amazing student that has felt like I have a place to belong at Rock River Charter School and felt like I can be more confident in a social school setting. And she has helped me to develop more personal connections with other students at Charter and other teachers. And as a dual enrollment who goes, as a dual enrollment student who goes to both Rock River Charter School and Craig, she's helped me flourish in all ways possible. Rebecca, she's helped me be more creative with my writing. I love to write, and she's helped me every step of the way, and she helped me get into the school newspaper at Craig. Betsy is a helper at, at Rock River Charter School and always strives to make everyone's day with small conversations in the elevator and just saying hi in the hallway, and always make sure you feel included. Lindy is a teacher who I've only spent a month with, but she's helped me be brave as a student and felt like I really belonged in her classroom. However, even though these teachers have helped me tremendously, I wouldn't be here without my sister. My sister graduated from Rock River Charter School in 2022, and she is my biggest role model. I wouldn't know of Charter if it wasn't for her, so I'm forever grateful for taking her advice. She's always been by my side and has no plan on leaving it. So if it wasn't for my sister, the wonderful people of Rock River Charter, and the great Lord above, I wouldn't be where I am today. Thank you.
Great job, Elijah. Now we have Ivory with RUHS.
Good evening, students, families, board members, and faculty alike. My name is Ivory Christensen, and I'm a junior at Rock University High School, and I've been with the school since I started my high school journey. I picked RUHS during the peak of COVID-19 and was initially drawn in by the small class sizes and the strong student-teacher relationships. When I began RUHS, I took two orchestra classes at Parker High School. Kerr, Dr. Anzrod, and all other teachers moved mountains to make sure I had the best schedule for me specifically. This also included online courses and class modifications when necessary. But what won me over after two-plus years is our middle-college model. Right now, I'm taking six high school courses at Rock University and six college courses at Blackhawk Technical College. I'm in the web developer program, and thanks to our partnership with Blackhawk Tech, I'm on track to graduate in 2025 with both a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the exact same time. Even though it's a heavy course load, I know in the end, not only will I receive two diplomas, but I will be college and career-ready thanks to Rock University. Rock University not only met my initial desire for a small school and close-knit community, but it far exceeded my expectations. When I first joined as a freshman, there were no cliques, no hierarchies, no drama, nothing. We were all just students, treating each other equally. I started as the freshman class representative in our Student Leadership Council, and eventually, this year, became the president of it. The SLC's, or the SLC highlights RUHS's student leaders, and we worked to bridge the gap between our students and faculty and our parents and board. We also worked to fundraise for all of RUHS's events and clubs, and every year, we put on our prom. Our SLC fundraisers, such as bonding with the seniors at Max Pizza Shack and taping our math teacher to the wall to fund our prom, exemplify our strong student connections. Thank you, Mr. Lilly, for letting us do that. This year, we continue to foster those bonds with initiatives like the Averes Cross Age Tutoring Program, which I am a part of. I'm also visiting the three district middle schools with a group of eight students to introduce RUHS to our 8th graders. I had one last week, I had one this afternoon, actually, and I have one next Monday. And that's really why I'm here tonight. I chose Rock University without really fully knowing what it was. But now that I've experienced it, I believe everyone should know about it. I understand that RUHS is not for everyone, but it's been a game changer for my education. With fantastic peers and teachers, it's perfect for anyone who, like me, loves to work hard and get ahead. To wrap it up, I encourage all of you, parents, students, board members, teachers, everyone, to join us at our open house on Thursday, November 2nd, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. It provides an amazing look into what RUHS is all about and what we do on a day-to-day basis. You can find us on the Blackhawk Technical College campus at 6004 South County Road G between Janesville and Beloit. Thank you.
Ivory, hold on a minute. Great job. Thank you for doing that. So you said November 2nd, 5:30 to 7?
Yes.
Okay. I, Liz, Commissioner Paul and I have visited all three of these charter schools, and Dr. Hernandez, Peterson, and Anzrod have been so gracious, but you have, you are at a beautiful facility. I do encourage...
I have to give my graces to Dr. Anzrod. I love that woman.
Yeah, for sure. But we're lucky to have all three of these options. I mean, they're really great options for our, our students to have an alternative to the regular high schools, and we enjoy our visits there. But thank you for coming tonight, all three of you. Great job. And I do encourage, if you've not been to RUHS, please go see it. It's really, really nice. Thank you. All right. Now consent agenda, number four. What? Oh, sorry. You guys, I'm, I will get it together. Maybe by, maybe by the close, I'll get it. All right, 3.4, citizen comments. We have one, Mark McLennan. Mark, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Mark McLennan. 1023 North Sumaker Drive, Janesville. So many of you met my daughter this morning, or sorry, this evening, Maddie. I'd really like to highly encourage the board, the school district, to look at accessibility in the schools. My daughter's been stuck in the elevator at Marshall, 15, 20, 25, 30, 32 minutes on separate occasions. The technology is too old to allow them doors to be open any longer. So I know Marshall's probably one of the newer of all the two-story schools, so I can't imagine what Franklin, Edison, Adams, you know, all the other schools do. so I can't imagine what Franklin, Edison, Adams, you know, all the other schools do. They are not equipped, if you saw the sheer size of her chair, they are not equipped for these things. She cannot even fully turn around in them. I know it's a big undertaking, and I know it's, you know, there's a lot that goes behind it, but something's got to be done for future students in chairs. So I highly encourage you guys to look at the school district's accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you. We will do that. Consider the approval of the consent agenda. Motion made by Greg, seconded by Lisa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine-zero. Thank you. 5.1, presentation of final and complete fiscal 2023-2024 school district budget, Mr. McCray.
Thank you very much, President Hayworth. Thank you very much. Couple notes before we dive into this evening's presentation. Really big shout out and thank you to Matt Sylvester Knudsen, our Director of Finance, Tammy Carlson, who is our Grants Manager, Fiscal Analyst, Rachel Monson, right, who is tucked away in Student Services. But Rachel coordinates all the building secretaries conducting the count, the student count, which is a significant component of the district's budget. So shout out to Rachel, certainly others in Business Services, Human Resources, the Directors, Superintendent Holtzman, and of course, the Finance Committee. So I was challenged, right, there's thirty minutes on the agenda for this presentation to get through that, contrary to the length of our typical Finance Committee meetings. But thanks to Commissioner Arjury, Carl Dahmerhausen, Commissioner Millard, and Commissioner Hanawal on participating in that group. The budget really almost begins in December, right? So I had a conversation a little bit earlier today that, you know, we're always thinking about the budget. And it really culminates with today, but tomorrow, so to speak, we really start working on the next fiscal year budget. I shared this with Finance, you know, a big proponent of Deming, right? And so we really need to embrace a continuous improvement approach. Our budget should be growing, the process should be growing, I should say, every year to get better because it's really, if you will, and you've heard me say this before, no mission, no money, no money, no mission. And it really is to support instruction in the classroom, and we'll expand the classroom to not only traditional four walls, but outside on our playing fields and in our theaters as well. We're going to provide kind of a high-level overview. We've really, over time, have spent a great level of detail. Keep in mind, right, it's an evolving process all the way through September and even into late October. We're often asked, and it's a requirement, to publish our budget, to push out a budget publication, and we're really still waiting at times for some very sentinel data points to come through. And they did late last week, so everything within your packet is really up to date and overrules anything that you received prior to that time. Couple of quick highlights before we get into the PowerPoint. We saw the state support and the governor sign off on an increase in the district's low-revenue limit floor. Sometimes it's referred to as the ceiling, but it's really the floor. We've been locked in at ten thousand. We've seen that time or that dollar value grow even since I've been here, but that's essentially the minimal amount. And so we saw a very gracious increase of a thousand dollars to eleven thousand. We did see an increase in our membership, our levy per member allowable, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. But as I shared with Finance, it's not one thousand plus three twenty-five, the three twenty-five is baked into the thousand. So we're not moving thirteen hundred and twenty-five, we moved a thousand. We also saw, if you will, some loss and increases in state aid. We saw a loss in high-poverty aid that was not included in the state budget. Last year, that was approximately four hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Keep in mind, any aid we receive within the revenue limit worksheet is an offset of property taxes. More aid, less taxes, right? So when you lose high-poverty aid, we shift that, if you will, to the local taxpayer. But we did see an increase of a hundred and fifty-four million plus in equalization aid that's added to the general pot that all four hundred and twenty-one school districts share, and that's valued at just over five-point-three-six billion dollars that we all compete with. We also saw, and we won't see it really, and you won't see it as property taxpayers until December, but an increase in the school levy credit. So sometimes a way to reduce taxes is either an increase in equalization aid or other aids or to increase the school levy credit. That's been a relatively flat figure for a number of years. It's currently, or was currently valued at nine hundred and forty million. There was a, look at my notes here, two hundred and, or two hundred and fifty-five million increase this fiscal year, and then there'll be an additional eighty million increase in the levy credit next year. So the levy credit, if you will, is something that you will see in the upper-right hand of your tax bill. So as a board, you will set the levy at over just fifty million dollars, right? But there will be an increase in funding, all right, or tax reduction, I should say, to local property taxpayers that the Department of Revenue will issue on November 20th to municipalities. They will then factor that into your tax bills, and you will see a reduction of the district's levy. The district will receive all fifty million, right, but that's property tax relief. We also, we'll just get right into the presentation because I'm probably on five minutes in, and I have a target. So as we know, we have two significant goals within the district, reading and math. And again, I touched on, if you will, some budget influencers, right? SR funding for us right now, and we're spending down the balance. We spent some time with the Finance Committee. We are on SR three. SR one is gone. The governor's relief budget is gone. SR two is gone. We're on SR three, right? And so what you see is really a culmination of a lot of evidence-based instructional strategies as part of the budget. That staffing, that's curriculum, we're winding that down, as well as the district's significant investments at Franklin Middle School in terms of indoor air quality. Keep in mind, we are in year three of four of a non-recurring operating referendum. That is valued this year at four million. Commissioner Murray was kind enough to stop by, and we spent some time discussing this. So if you were to look at the revenue limit worksheet, you will see eleven-point-five million. Keep in mind, when a district goes to a non-recurring referendum, each year, even though it's a four-year referendum, needs to be accounted for individually, right? So this year, it's eleven-point-five. Last year, it was seven-point-five. On the worksheet, it's eleven-point-five. It's really, though, an increase of four million over the prior year. I alluded to the three hundred and twenty-five dollar increase in revenue limit authority. That, again, is baked into the next bullet point, which is an increase from ten thousand to eleven thousand, the one-thousand-dollar increase. That's significant for us, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We did see a zero-dollar increase in per-student categorical aid. And keep in mind, and I know I'm talking really fast, so always feel free to interrupt, right, is when there was work in Madison to reduce revenue limit authority, right, there was an increase in per-student categorical aid. That's been off and on almost since Act 10. Right? Sometimes it's revenue limit increases, sometimes it's per-student categorical aid increases, sometimes it's neither. And we'll see a little bit of chart further in the presentation. This year, it's zero. So everything, if you will, is put into, for us, the low-revenue limit floor increase of a thousand dollars. When Superintendent Holtzman visited with the board back in late March, right, it was really focusing on instruction, reducing lower class sizes, right? As enrollment shifts and changes, right, we've even seen an expansion of instructional staff beyond that board presentation, right? We also had, and this was part of it, back in March, right, an increase of four-point-five in special education staffing. And then something new this year, so when the question is asked, so you seem to have somewhat of a cash windfall. You may recall in past years, we really looked to lease technology, right, just to really break down the annualized cost of that investment over a period of time. So a little bit more, if you will, dare I say, flush with cash. So working with Dr. Smiley, we need significant improvements in our wireless network and all other things, if you will, technologies such as servers. And we're also looking to enhance the devices that are within classrooms, including IMAX, right? So rather than lease that, we're looking at a two-million-dollar cash payment, if you will, to support that investment in technology. And of course, the board made a decision to essentially sign off on an eight-percent CPI, which is really a five-point-nine. We won't go down too far that rabbit hole, but that's an investment in staff. Originally, back in July, right, we were at a kind of a pivotal point in terms of what's in the budget, what's the governor going to sign? We begin negotiations. There is a preliminary budget, right? And so with the passage in the state legislature and with the signature of the governor, right, that afforded some of us opportunity to really take that and invest in staff. Couple of things I've hit. We'll go through these relatively quickly. Year three of four is four-million-dollar increase. We have a Fund 10 budget balanced at one hundred and forty-two-point-nine million. We have a Fund 27 balanced at twenty-two-point-six million. Keep in mind, originally, as part of the governor's proposal, was to accelerate the difference between the transfer from Fund 10 to 27, essentially increasing the reimbursement cost for special education. That went up just a percentage point or so. We're approximately at thirty-three percent. Keep in mind, though, statewide, that's a sum certain, right? So it could be a little bit less, so it's not guaranteed that every district will be reimbursed at thirty-three percent. I mentioned Rachel and our very capable administrative assistant staff at Buildings, right? The September membership for us is ninety-one oh eight. It's really stable. And keep in mind, right, and the Finance Committee gets this almost ad nauseam, there's a difference between enrollment and membership. And even within membership, there's a difference in terms of FTE. As a quick example, a 4K kindergartner, if you will, is a point-six FTE, and anyone in grades one through twelve is a one-point-oh. So membership and enrollment, different, certainly a great deal of interdependence, but ninety-one oh eight, and that's after, if you will, that's our September. I'll just pause there. The district's levy is proposed to increase from forty-six-point-nine to fifty-point-two. I'm sorry, did you have a question? Okay, you moved.
I scratched.
Okay, very good. So that's just over a three-million-dollar increase. And keep in mind, when we're looking at the three-million-dollar increase, the state's significant investment in the levy credit. Okay, we don't get to take credit for that. It would have been great to have that on the equalization aid side, but we'll pass it along. At fifty million, the district will receive its fifty million. Taxpayers will not pay fifty million. And also keep in mind, right, back in 2019, my first year here, right, the district went through a revaluation. If you look back at your city of Janesville, tax bills from last year, you're probably in the mid-seventies in terms of a ratio, right? The city of Janesville needs to increase that between ninety-five and one-oh-five. That's state statute, right? So that's that revaluation. So it's anywhere, and don't quote me on this, but it's that thirty to forty percent increase in revaluation. Doesn't mean the district's going to get thirty to forty percent more money. It's a redistribution, right, of the property values. All right, now, the district will get more money, we just said, because we're increasing from forty-six-nine to fifty-point-two. All right, so it is going up about three-point-one million. And the last bullet point here, right, the district's mill rate is proposed to fall from seven forty-one to seven-oh-five. Twelve percent increase in property values. I think there's maybe a twelve-point-one, but essentially a twelve percent increase in property values, right? So mill rate, and you've heard me say this before, is not necessarily indicative of tax burden, right? It's really a calculation where we take the aggregate to out-property values, right, and we're dividing that into our levy of fifty million. That gets us to seven dollars and five cents. That's on the revenue limit worksheet. You've seen this slide now for the past five years, all the different school finance variables. These are things we talk about at Finance for an hour and forty-five minutes almost each time we meet. Membership, again, a shout out to Rachel. School funding, oops, excuse me, went a little too fast there, right, is really dependent upon our members. Fewer members, fewer funds. More members, more funds. This is a snapshot of the 2023 membership, and you notice it's everything from preschool, right, to full-day kindergarten to grades one through twelve for ninety-one oh eight. That's the September count. Keep in mind, there are two other elements you'll see on the revenue limit worksheet, one of which is the independent charter school. We will tax for those, right? Those who are attending independent charter schools, right, and our summer school, right? So that's what drives the district's revenue limit FTE. This is what our enrollment and membership looks like over time. Again, I keep shouting and praising Rachel, if you will, right? She's been great to work with, as have her predecessors. Sometimes it's a little bit of a moving target for us when we get to late September and October, right? This number changes almost daily, right? But at a point in time, for revenue limit worksheet purposes, we need to lock in. So we work with Rachel and say, can you pause for a moment? Let's lock in, and then as changes occur, because, right, we have over ninety-five-hundred students, people are coming and going all the time. But we do need to take a point in time and lock in. Open enrollment. So fascinating, right, in that when I came in 2019, twenty, we were plus two hundred and fifty students, okay? We've shifted, we're minus twelve, and that's a net minus twelve in terms of your outs are greater than your ins. Right? That's a significant cost for us. All right, I'll go back to 2019, twenty, we were almost a positive one-point-five million in terms of revenue supporting the district. That's after expenses. Okay, now it's a two-hundred-thousand-dollar expense for us. So when we look over time and we say, what are we doing, right? These are things, right, that are impacting our budget that we don't necessarily always talk about. So Superintendent Holtzman, the Cabinet, which obviously includes me, right, have, you know, how do we begin to address this, right? Well, this is not a good trend line for us. So you'll see probably work over the next year, right? And it's not just necessarily a one-year project, right? But we really need to start digging and seeing what's happening, right? You've heard me quote this before, right, and this is somewhat old data. It's a great research by Mark Skidmore and Bambi Stats, who are both PhDs at UW-Watertown. And there are two predominant reasons as to why people leave. Better opportunity, higher-spending districts are perceived to offer more, right, and socioeconomic issues. Right now, that data is probably fifteen years old. Perhaps it's unfair I raise that, but we have to dig. Why are people leaving? Revenue limit. Everyone's heard this before, right? We talked a little bit about the difference between enrollment and membership. Everything's calculated on a three-year average, right? Lots of variables, lots of things to track, right? It's not always as linear as we would like it to be. I referenced earlier kind of how we have per-student categorical aid, right? Low, if you will, floor increases, right, and revenue limit increases. There's actually an error on here, and if anyone can identify it, right, maybe I'll buy you a soda at the end. But I'll point it out is if you look to that far right-hand side, 2024, 25, that blue line should be, that very long blue line should be in 2023, 24, because that's the thousand-dollar increase in our low-revenue limit floor. So sorry about that. Trust me, the mill rate's correct, all right? So that's my, that's my error. But what you see, right, is a decrease in revenue limit authority all the way back to 2011, 12, and you're not going to see every fiscal year populated with an item, right? We're not keeping pace, and this was the original intent, way back when 1993 came around and revenue limits were implemented, is to keep pace with the CPI. That's not keeping pace with the CPI, right? So we have a dramatic effect this year, 2023, 24, in terms of a revenue limit increase. Again, the floor's coming up, of a thousand dollars. It'd be nice to have CPI all the way throughout, right? So when the commissioner goes to WSAB, right, and is talking about resolutions, right? Now, they're resolutions, but it's really working through the School Board Association to encourage state legislators to perhaps return to the original intent. But that's not a very good trend line. Revenue limit, again, is calculated, membership, right, times eleven thousand gives you an aggregate value. That's how the revenue limit authority, in brief, is calculated. This is the really ugly revenue limit worksheet. Trust me, we're not going to go all through A through K, right? We, I'm sorry, Commissioner Arjury, we could, all right? But I have a few directors here who are timing me, right, as well as Ms. Jensen. So I'll start off with A. That's your base revenue. That's essentially the base that we begin with. The left side, if you will, is enrollment. We move all the way down to property values, which are released in October. We move to the right side. Everything's calculated, eleven thousand times the membership. We work through some exemptions on the left side. We factor in our state aids on the right side, excuse me. And then we get down to J. What's our Fund 10 levy? What's our Fund 38? Both within the revenue limit authority. Then we look to our Fund 39 outside, which is our debt service, and Fund 80, which is our community service fund. I'll get to Community 80, I think, or Fund 80 in just a moment. Our community service fund, not Community 80, our community service fund. We're proposing administratively, right, that there's an increase from one hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred thousand. This is something we shared at Finance in terms of a twenty-five-thousand-dollar increase, if you will, to shift the responsibilities of Bags of Hope, right, to a community service fund. We're really focusing on this next slide on lines six and seven of the worksheet. It just shows, if you will, a decline. We can see back in 2014, the district had a revenue limit authority of 95 million. Right? If you go back to last year, we were at 92 million. Well, membership's down. So the state formula essentially says, when membership is down, your revenue goes down. Or you could keep pace with CPI over the years, which the state formula has not allowed us to do. And then we see a dramatic increase of 1,000. Shifting from revenue limit authority to equalization aid, if you think revenue limit authority is a sleepy topic, equalization aid is even more so. So just bear with me, if you would. If you will, the, the, the more poverty you have in a district, essentially property, property, poverty, right, the more aid you receive. The wealthier your district is in terms of property, the less aid you receive. We've been fairly stable in recent years in terms of our FTE. All right, but if you will, and this is what we shared at Finance, right, is as property values go up, and if your FTE is stable, or your FTE is going down, right, the difference appears as though you're more property wealthy per student. And when you're more property wealthy per student, you receive less state aid. That's how the formula works. When you receive less state aid, local property taxpayers make up the difference. Right? So we've been stable, so not so much of an impact this year, right? But it's just something to keep in mind in terms of the equalization aid formula. Property values go up, enrollment goes down, there's a shift to local taxpayers. We would love if property values were going up and membership was going up, right? That would be great, you know, then, then we're even as we move forward. This is a very ugly equalization aid worksheet. There's probably only three people in the district who really embrace this spreadsheet, and that's Tammy, Matt, and myself. So, but this is a calculation, and what it is doing is it's taking a look at your membership, and it's taking a look at shared cost, because it's shared cost that we're aided on. And shared cost is essentially what we are taxing for, what we are aided on, right? And then what our debt service is. So when we look at a gate receipt or a gift to the district, okay, those are not shared costs. It's called a deductible receipt, and thanks for bearing with me on that one. This is a bar graph representation of the three levels and the totality of our equalization aid. There are three levels of aid, primary, secondary, and tertiary. Right? As a tertiary aided district, right, that's a good thing to be. Matt Sylvester Knutson was in Whitewater. That's a negatively aided, it's a tertiary district. Right? So they don't get any aid at that third level. The more they spend, the less aid they get. The more we spend, the more aid we get. But we don't want a deficit spend. Although the perversity of the formulas, if we did that, we'd get more aid, and there'd be more property tax relief. But that's probably not good fiscal management. If we look to that fourth column, right, and I don't even have my readers on, but you'll see equalization aid is 61.5%. And the remaining balance of the district's revenue limit authority, the burden, if you will, goes to local taxpayers. So that two-thirds funding that former Governor Tommy Thompson spoke about, 66, you know, 33, or thereabouts, or a little bit lower than that. It'd be nice to return to that. And if we return to that via more equalization aid, right, there'd be less property taxes. Ideally, we want more blue in totality. But it's going to be difficult to achieve that. It's just how our formula works. Okay, this individual's not scared about our revenues and expenses, right, but it's just an awesome picture. I alluded to earlier, we are done with S R 1, gear, the governor's emergency relief. We're done with S R 2, and we have remaining dollars in S R 3. Patrick Gasper and I had the opportunity to meet with WCLO and the Gazette today, along with Matt Sylvester Knutson. And we really framed it, and kudos, you know, to the administration, I suppose, kudos to the board for not baking in S R funding like we're buying groceries with it. Right? Some districts have been reliant upon S R funding, in some districts locally. Right? And so then they have to either pass a referendum to close that gap. We really used it not to supplant, but to supplement instruction. Right? Now, that doesn't mean that there aren't going to be some things to consider that are currently S R funded, because they were really great, and there's been an evaluation, and we want to continue that programming into the next fiscal year, in which we need to find local dollars to support that. But we've not, we're not buying groceries, so to speak, with S R funds. This is going to be really boring, all right, and I'll hit it very high level, right? Our Fund 10 revenues by source, again, the state still is the largest contributor to education funding in the school district of Janesville. That's that state store, source, excuse me, roughly in the middle. This is kind of a big fan of Rocky Ricoco's, so rather than a circle pie chart, we went with the square pie chart, right? And you can just kind of graphically see, so to speak, you know, the state is the significant amount of funding. These are expenses by function. All right, everything from instruction, right, all the way down to other transactions. If we take a look, right, so I appreciate Mr. Lipinski's comments, right? If we look at business administration, all right, holy buckets, right? Did you guys get new furniture in business services? Is that why it went up 6 million? And the answer is no. When you are doing a construction project using S R funding, right, that's in the 255,000 function, right? So that falls under business services. So it's not really a business function, but if it's not instructional, and it's not any of those other items such as debt service, or central services, or general administration, right, which is superintendent's office and the board, that's where those dollars happen to fall. Right? So we'll go back, anything related to transportation is a business services function, utilities, custodial, maintenance, and construction, which is why we see a tick up in that particular line with federal funding. And this is just another kind of Rocky Ricoco graphical presentation of Fund 10 expenses. I want to go back to, if you will, Fund 10 expenses by function. And the third from the bottom is you'll see transfers. And you'll see essentially the actual 13, 2, 13, 2, and then you see a budget increase in 23, 24 of just over, it's approximately 2.5 million, right? So that's out to 2.3. That transfer, for the most part, right, is essentially the transfer from Fund 10 to 27. Okay, again, Mr. Lipinski was astute enough to raise the question in terms of, you got some extra money? Are you banking some, just in case things go awry? So what we're doing, and what we shared with Finance, is our plan is, and you'll see a little bit later in debt service, is to prepay some of our long-term debts this year with funds that are available. And we're going to talk about that when we get to Fund 38. Fund 27 revenues by source, you'll see a giant transfer amount in there of 13 million, state and federal support. And again, as I shared earlier, ideally, we would have want that state support to increase, thereby reducing the transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27. Another graphical representation, Rocky Ricoco style with transfers. Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm with you. And then expenses by function. And obviously, instruction and people's support services, right, within Fund 27 are predominant. We don't charge construction. We don't charge waste removal, or utilities, or board, or administration to Fund 27. Oops. So I alluded to earlier, and on the little screen here, and on your handout, you'll see a transfer of 2.5 million. Right? So again, I commend the work of the Finance Committee. I really appreciate Mr. Hannah Wall's comment when we were talking about during Finance, the possibility of taking additional revenue this year, and potentially next year, but we're focused on this year, of 2.5 million, and paying off a component of our Fund 38 debt. Our Fund 38 debt goes out to 2030, March of 2030, it's approximately 1.1 million every year. You say, okay, well, it's 1.1 million, it's Fund 38, right? But Fund 38, you may recall, is within the district's revenue limit authority. When we free up dollars there, we free up dollars for operational expenses. And we look into future budget planning, we want to free up those dollars as quickly as possible. And so one way to do that is to take a bit of a cash windfall this year, the fees like we've done before related to Fund 39 debt, but do it this case for Fund 38 debt. We receive the aid, it's an expenditure this year, and then most likely, a bank, I won't say their name, will become a paying agent, and they'll pay off that debt as scheduled to the individuals who hold those bonds. 2.5 million knocks off about two and a half years. All right, if we could do another 2 million next year, right, we're knocking that off by another 2.2 million. So if we can knock that off, again, that's freeing up approximately 1.1 in terms of operational dollars within the district's revenue limit authority. Now, there's an assumption there that our district's revenue limit authority will continue to be at that same level. So that's why you see that 2.5 million there, and why we referenced the 2.5 million in transfers earlier in the presentation. Let me go back here real quick. So kudos to the board. There are still some remembers who remain. This is debt in terms of Fund 38. We have two types of debts. I was remiss in saying that. One is related to the district's energy exemption, right, back in 2017, 18. That was about 14 and 3/4 million dollars of bonds that were issued to support improvements predominantly at Edison. Right? We'll continue to pay for that. We can't defuse that because of just how that schedule is written and how that type of issuance was developed, right? But back in 2019, I think it was late summer, Commissioner Arjury, Commissioner Murray, and others may recall, right, the district refinanced, if you will, it's WRS debt. And that's the debt that we're looking to pay off even earlier to free up those dollars operationally. This is just a quick summary. Kudos to Commissioner Murray, he keeps me on task, in addition to Commissioner Arjury. A little bit of a snapshot in terms of the remaining balances of our Fund 38 and 39 debts. Fund 46, you may recall, is our long-term capital maintenance, right? If we have additional funds at the end of the year, it's part of the memo we asked the board to consider. We transfer funds into that. Think of it as a capital improvement sinking fund. All right, we are tapping some of that as we do work at Edison, as we do work at Franklin. Excuse me, Edison, probably this next year is going to be about a million out of that fund to replace the windows that date back to the original 1971, maybe, construction, Mr. Millard. And then Fund 39 is our capital project. And probably stealing a little bit of Commissioner Arjury's thunder, right? So Fund 39 is our 22.5 million that the voters approved back in 2020 to address boilers, secure pathways, and life safety systems. Right? So that is winding down. I hope to be finished with that by the end of this fiscal year, right? And so we have some projects that we're still chipping away at. I know we're working with Dr. Smiley in terms of overhead paging, making improvements district-wide. We have some gaps. We're also taking a look at improvements in card access, building automation systems, so on and so forth. So you'll start to see that eventually wind down to zero. Maybe a little bit of carryover next year, but I'm hoping to avoid that. Fund 50, student nutrition. You'll probably reference. Let me reframe that. So we continue to see good growth in that area, right, on both the revenue side. There's been some significant changes. We've talked a little bit about this again at Finance in terms of a shift from emergency relief funds that the student nutrition department was receiving. So we saw a decrease in that, but the National School Lunch Program, if you will, counterbalanced that with increase in reimbursement rates. So that's a good thing for us. Also, within the narrative, you may recall, we're looking at a market adjustment. This is one of our lowest-paid support staff groups. So that is, after we look at our revenues to ensure that we can sustain an increase in expenditures, we have wrapped that in as well. I touched on the community service fund earlier. So we historically have levied 175,000 in that, and so we're essentially asking for an increase of 27 to support Bags of Hope, and really support a position to coordinate that. The board may recall, there is a reduction in the board assistant, assistant clerk position. And so those duties fell to the executive assistant, to the superintendent. And then there's a great group of volunteers, but there's also a portion of that individual's time who is supporting Bags of Hope. Keep in mind, that feeds approximately 350 families plus over the, the holiday break. Couple of things about Fund 80, and you're going to say, well, you know, the math doesn't seem to work out. If someone were to write a check to Bags of Hope, if someone were to write a check to the literacy, we're capturing those donations within Fund 80, so it's not always just a levy and an offsetting expense. There's a levy, and there are additional revenues in addition to the levy. Again, there's individual donors, there's grants, there's other things that are solicited and received. We book all that in support of those programs within Fund 80. Funds 21 and 73 are fiduciary funds. Fund 21 is essentially FFA, the football program, any types of gifted donations, whether student-oriented or district-oriented. Fund 21 is an avenue to capture those, and Fund 73 is our employee benefits trust for other post-employment benefits. Fund balance, again, Commissioner Murray keeps me on task here. We've seen that grow over time. The percentage is always, right, I think our minimum is 17% per board policy. You know, you wish you could put away more. When we put away more, that's less aid the district receives. I'm kind of a big aid-oriented individual. If there was more aid, that's great, because that's less property taxes. So it's good to see that trending upward versus trending down, because if we're trending down, then we're burning through cash. And it's not all cash, and I think we have two Finance Committee presentations on fund balance, or I'd be happy to spend some time with you to talk about that very exciting topic as well. Mill rate, real quick, this is essentially the levy by fund for your consideration this evening. All right, last year, Fund 10 was less than that. We're looking for a $10.6 million increase. And you're going to go, holy buckets, 10.6 million. That's what a $1,000 increase to the district's low revenue limit ceiling or floor affords you. We have non-referendum debt, that really doesn't change. The capital expansion fund, we do not levy for that. The property tax chargeback, that's a refund that grew, or decreased, I should say, by $2,826. And the referendum-approved levy. And you're going to say, what's up with the 7.4 million dollar reduction? Keep in mind, our practice has been to levy in advance to retire debt service early, to protect, to potentially structure our debt for a question in the future, as well as save on interest. All right, it'd be disingenuous, and we've chatted about this again at the committee and at the administrative level, to say, let's take full advantage of the $1,000 floor increase, and let's continue to levy in advance. Right? We're really trying to be sensitive, because that would have been a huge increase beyond the 3 million that's being proposed this evening. The 3.2 million is no levying in advance on debt service within Fund 39. Again, we talked about a transfer from 10 to 38, different from a levy. So an overall increase of 3.2, which is approximately a 7% increase in the district's levy over the prior year.
Mr. McCray?
Yes?
The capital expansion fund levy, what is that, and why don't we levy for that?
Excellent question. So the capital expansion fund, Fund 10, Fund 38, and Fund 41 are within the district's revenue limit authority. So what happens in Fund 41 is, if you were to levy in that line, you would reduce an operational expenditure, right? And while Fund 31 could be an operational expenditure, right, is you're reducing anything from staff to workbooks to other things. That's me, sorry. This is how the mill rate is calculated, 50 million divided by 7.1 in terms of total property value, times 1,000 for a mill rate of 7.05. District mill rate over time continues to decrease. One thing we shared at the principal meeting, this was kind of some feedback we received is, well, you know, when we go to other communities, you know, why do they look a little bit different than us? Right? Make sure I skip that. So one way to understand that is to really take a look at the revenue limit per member. Right? So this is looking at Rock County school districts, and take you through this real quick from left to right. Rock County districts, the base revenue per member, sometimes there's a referendum that jacks that number up, right? Take a look at their three-year average, excuse me, membership average. Take a look at their three-year average, excuse me, membership average, and then the revenue limit authority. So you can see in this case, Clinton has a revenue limit authority this coming year of just over fourteen thousand dollars. Janesville has a revenue limit authority of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two. So they have more revenue per member. Okay, that's nice. Okay, let's take a look at some of our peers within the Big Eight and then just some peers outside of the Big Eight. So you can see Verona, following the same pattern, has a base revenue limit per member of fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-one. Right, Madison, fourteen zero two five, Sun Prairie, thirteen five, Middleton, thirteen. We're at twelve point two when you factor in the district's revenue limit exemption of eleven point five million. West Alice, West Milwaukee is still sitting at eleven thousand. Wassau, eleven point four, and Sheboygan at eleven point one. Okay, that's kind of, that's interesting. It's interesting data, perhaps only for me at the podium. And you go, well, what's the difference? So if you look to the far-right column, well, what if SDJ had Verona's per-member revenue limit? Right, we'd have twenty-nine million more. If we had Madison's, we'd have sixteen million more. If we had Sun Prairie, we'd have twelve million. If we had Middleton, we had seven point three. Right, so when folks go off to Sun Prairie or Middleton or Verona or Madison, whether you're walking in a classroom, right, whether you're walking in athletic field or performing arts area, right, and you say, man, they just seem to have more. Well, they do. And it's because and part of the revenue limit per member. Oops. One thing we shared in the past, too, is kind of approved referenda, debt referendum since nineteen ninety-five. Just taking a look at area districts, right? And these are just things as we begin to, because we talked about, yes, start thinking about next year's budget. We have to start thinking about the future. So kind of wrapping up the presentation for this fiscal year, but what's going on in the future, right, is since nineteen ninety-five, Janesville has issued one hundred and thirty-one point eight million dollars in debt. Clinton's issued forty-seven point nine. Elkhorn's ninety, right? We are bigger. And then we look at comparably sized districts in terms of enrollment, right, we can see where we rank. Now, you'll notice I didn't include any Dane County districts, right? Sometimes we'll say Dane County's not reality. Right? If we look at Sun Prairie, Sun Prairie has issued, and they've had a tremendous amount of student growth, right, nearly half a billion dollars in debt, you know, two relatively new high schools, other improvements, so on and so forth. Same with Verona, right, same with Middleton, same with DeForest, same with Wanakee, right? So really taking a look at where we're at within our own community, Rock County, and where we're at, if you will, in terms of comparably sized districts. Again, aligning our budget, right, to essentially achieve our educational goals. And that's our purpose. And we look forward. Commissioner Herta?
For those of you that might, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Denise, but in regards to that twenty-five thousand dollar increase that you're asking for in that community service fund, could you just share what some of the responsibilities are in event planning for Bags of Hope and how much time that might take you and the rationale for that increase, just so we could all have a better understanding?
That is putting me on the spot.
I said I was sorry.
The goal for Bags of Hope is to raise money, as we all know, and so each year that becomes more and more of a challenge, especially as we find more poverty in Janesville. Event planning and trying to do that, we're raising fifty thousand dollars within a, you could say, within a year's time, each year we try to raise that same amount. Some of the things that we do for that are, we have a large fundraiser this year, was a concert at J-Pac, invited the community for that, trying to get VIP sponsors that go along with that, working with J-Pac and negotiating with the band on the contracts for that, working with volunteers for that event as well. And then we also have a district-wide trivia night that's coming up. That trivia night, we do solicit many businesses in town that donate gift cards that we use as part of that. We have twenty-two teams this year that have signed up. We have a trivia master who's actually one of our own employees. So it's coordinating all of those, getting the teams signed up, making all the deposits, tracking the budget on that. In addition, as all of that fundraising is going on, then we're also having district-wide committee meetings for Bags of Hope Fund, or the Bags of Hope event itself, which we have district members from across all of our schools that work together as volunteers to help organize the actual food delivery event, which happens at Dollar General. Dollar General, Festival Foods are both on that committee, and so they work with our team to determine which families then are eligible for Bags of Hope and help us determine how the day of goes for the organization for the bagging and the deliveries. I hope that was enough.
Well, for putting you on the spot, you did a darn good job. And I ask that a little bit in rhetoric because I understand event planning very well. And it's a lot of coordination, a lot of logistics on top of everything else that you do. So it was a very good explanation for all of us to understand a little bit more about what that event takes to run, but also more importantly, what I take back of your explanation is who it serves. And I go back to a pre-planning strategic planning event with board members about who we serve in the Janesville School District. And what a remarkable event to host, to be able to help those in that socioeconomic group that need that help. So I appreciate all your work that you've done over the years for that, and I support that transition of that amount into that fund. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you very much for taking time to talk with me this past week.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it, it was very helpful. And I think you're doing an outstanding job, you and your helpers and staff.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
And Kim, thank you very much for getting that information, like, and I couldn't believe how fast you got me that information.
Jimmy John's.
Can you tell me about the, what's changing with the Parker Arts Academy?
Yeah, exactly. So you may recall, it was Superintendent Puffall who organized a three-year funding cycle from a private donor. The conclusion of that three-year funding cycle ended this last school year. And I believe it was administration and working with Principal Lau, the intent to really absorb that into our Fund Ten local budget. So the last year, I believe, right, so it wasn't a full amount every year. You're catching me a little bit there, Commissioner Murray. I want to say that the last contribution from that donor this last fiscal year was approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you. Oh, we'll move on to discussion, right? We're, okay. Can you tell me or tell us about compensation for varsity coaches that's in the budget, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So, and let me reframe, right? I know in the original document, it was varsity. It's really all nine, twelve high school coaches. So you may recall, we have three levels. We have a JV two, we have an assistant, and we have a head coach. Those are the three levels of coaching. Coaching, and again, I probably should have printed that memo, too, Mr. Murray. I believe it's been twelve years, oh, thank, I'm good, nope. That was the twelve years I was thinking about, since we last increased coach compensation. So really worked closely with District Athletic Director Jim McLaury, looked at some comps, looked, and comps at times can be all over the board, but really looked at what best meets our needs here in the school district of Janesville.
Thank you. I guess, we're just having a discussion, do I have to wait till the next engine item to make a motion if I want to make an amendment?
I think so, because that's the.
No. I guess, since it's already been talked about, the proposal to hire an individual at the rate of twenty-five thousand dollars to manage Bags of Hope. Why, I agree with everything that Commissioner Herta says, and I think it's a wonderful program. And I even think that the volunteers may benefit more from that service work than the families getting the food. And there is certainly a need, but what I'm concerned about is that now we're being, the board is being asked to appropriate money to hire somebody to do this volunteer work. And I understand why, because it happens to be Denise's position as an administrative assistant, is that the right term? Then, a few years ago, when Deb Weston retired, we piled that on her. And then she's also doing yeoman's work with the Bags of Hope. It's just incredible. But it's come time, in my opinion, I'm trying to, I'm not anti-Bags of Hope.
Of course not.
Okay. That it's become evident that her work as administrative assistant and assistant board clerk is being, I don't know what the right word is. In fact, she needs to be doing that work more than the Bags of Hope.
Yes.
So when it's time, I'm going to make a motion to this effect. But what I, you know, the risk that I'll take saying is, I think, we've done this for fifteen years?
Yes.
About fifteen years. I think it's time for us to start looking for somebody else to take over the administration part of the Bags of Hope. The school district of Janesville has done it for fifteen years. I think it's, I mean, I could drop names of our organizations and people, but I think, I can approve this. I think it's time to have those serious discussions of what the future of Bags of Hope will look like. I mean, there's lots of other entities and people that could do this as well or maybe even better. So other than that, I think it's a great budget.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just a couple of comments. Mr. McCray alluded to some of the highlights of additional compensation that's covered in the budget, and I just really want to reaffirm those things. So with having applied the five point nine percent across the board for everybody, well, not exactly that way, but you guys understand. Then Kevin mentioned and asked about the coaches' compensation. It's been twelve years. Also, the school nutrition program, those increases. And, you know, the things that we also don't look at, this is on top of all the additional behind-the-scenes cost increases. The utilities continue to go up. I say that, obviously, working for Our Line Energy, it's not the case that that's what we want to do, but a lot of it is the operations of our buildings, they use more, so there are going to be more cost. But that also highlights we need to figure out a way to reduce that impact. And the boilers and everything that was done a part of the referendum actually reduced some of those cost impacts because they are more efficient. So I wanted to just point out some of those additional things that was baked in the budget that aren't necessarily highlighted, and it's really yeoman's work for our two-hour meetings every month, so. Thank you.
I just want a couple of comments. I'm so excited about paying down that WRS debt.
Yes.
That is marvelous that you guys have done that, you know? I was hoping that I'd be here the day that that thing was finally paid off.
One more term?
No.
Okay.
Gosh darn it. Okay. Oh, I just remembered. The line about health insurance.
Yes.
Was about a one percent increase to the district.
Correct.
Budget. But overall, it was at least nine percent increase to the health insurance providers.
To the subscribers, yes, sir.
Right, and so what we did this year, which is very, was a very difficult decision, we passed on the most of that money increase onto our employees this year. Is that it?
No, I'm feeling like Denise a few moments ago. Yeah, so essentially, right, there is a shift predominantly to the dean's subscribers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, looking at Slide Forty-Six, just about Fund Eighty again, can you just, so there's no donation allocation for the twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yep, and that's a great observation, yes, ma'am. We typically don't budget because we don't know.
Right.
Right, so, you know, someone, so for example, right, and again, Fund Eighty, it's small, I don't want to say it's not material, but when we're building that out, we certainly had an event a few weeks ago, to which I know that group raised funds. So we budget zero, and then if we were to do it probably next month, when the finance committee is reviewing the monthly financials, is you would see that line begin to populate, and you'd begin to see the expense line populate as well.
Okay. Now, back to this role real quick, just, so this person for twenty-five thousand is going to do Bags of Hope, and there's an early literacy component to the job description?
Yeah, so, and that's a very fair question as well. So we're not seeing this position report to our early literacy coordinator. I'll give you just kind of a brief example, is we have an online fundraising platform that is really built out for Bags of Hope, right? So Carrie's doing great work, but she's not built out that fundraising platform for early literacy. So if, let's say, I'm a candidate and I'm going in and I'm maintaining my online fundraising platform for early literacy, why can't I just go in and build some of that, excuse me, for Bags of Hope? Why can't I go in and just build that out for early literacy? Right, so it's not an admin assistant, we've called it an assistant. I know Mr. Garner and I have kind of, we've not debated, but like, it's, what do we call this? You know, we're not looking for, I don't believe, an executive-level fundraiser, right? It's just someone who has great communication skills and great organizational skills. The twenty-five thousand also keeps in mind that that's all in, so that's FICA, right, that's some expenses if need be. We're really trying to gear it to where, at this point in time, because it's new, it falls under the WRS threshold of hours for retirement contribution, right? It's truly part-time. The work that Denise and her volunteers undertake, you know, starts, we'll say, in the summer, right, some planning and wraps up by January, right? So this isn't a thousand forty, twenty hours per week, fifty-two hours. It's really minimal to begin with.
So that person fundraises for early literacy and Bags of Hope?
No, I mean, that's Carrie's predominant responsibility. The online giving platform is probably really, I would say, the pivotal piece because they're, it's the same platform. The switch is turned on for Bags of Hope, who's going to turn on the switch, if you will? And there's some building, right, I've not built it, you know, Denise could probably speak to it in terms of what that looks like, you know, do we tie it out to text messaging and all of that, right? It's not ours, but it also seems, is there any efficiency we can perhaps make with that position to just assist a little bit? They're in the same platform.
Okay, so then, let's say this gets approved tonight to have this role. What do we expect? So we generally expect fifty thousand. This is going to cost us twenty-five thousand. What do we expect that fifty thousand to go to then, when having a paid specific person in that role? Or am I misunderstanding something?
No, I'm not saying you're, we may not have been clear, so. I mean, that's fair, I guess, I, you know, not that I'm putting Denise on the spot, right? I think one is, are we maintaining the levels that we're fundraising, right? And then, do we have an opportunity to grow that as well? So let's just use eight hundred hours. I don't think we're assuming eight hundred hours if Denise's current time is being targeted towards Bags of Hope, right? But it's certainly a yeoman's, a yeoman's task, right, to assist with that initiative. How do we move that along? Yes, sir.
I guess a, a couple of comments. One is that, I think there was a comment before about Denise requesting the position, and there's no way, that definitely came from me. And, you know, I guess I want the board to understand that we have an executive who, I, in my opinion, too much of her time is focused on Bags of Hope and not developing policies, supporting the superintendent, and developing the board. And that likely is in relation to the fact that the board or district chose to reduce the number of staff we had. So when we brought this forward, we felt like it could be a synergistic model to move this to Fund eighty, because it is a community service that we're providing. Like Bags of Hope is a true community service, it fits one-hundred percent in this model. If we didn't move it to community service, we would have then added a halftime position in the district to remove the duties, because I need the administrative assistant and the board support to have more time and focus specifically on the things that we need that person to do. Bags of Hope is a piece of that, so I don't anticipate us growing it, we just, we are already spending money on that right now. We're just using a, we're not coding it to Bags of Hope, because the human resource is sitting right there to do the beast. So I think, I don't anticipate that number to change, we just need some help. And again, I would also say, our vision is up to twenty-five thousand dollars, which is not, you know, that's the, the apex. If someone was hired, if the board moves forward and we post the job, this year is, a, a lot of the work is already done, so it's some training and mechanism, and likely that would flow into then next year. You know, I would imagine, we, we're not gonna come close to spending that amount this year, but that would be something that we would ask for consideration.
So during those conversations that you had regarding this position, and helping relieve Denise of, of those duties, so she can focus and prioritize all the things you had just mentioned, was there also conversation within the, the cabinet and your directors of, is it the intent, I'll go back to what Kevin said, is it the intent to keep this? As opposed to having the conversation about possibly transitioning it to another entity within the community?
We have not had a conversation at the director's table about this going to anywhere else.
Was that not even a thought or a possibility to entertain that? Or was it just not thought of? Because you're, you're thinking about putting money into a budget.
Um, I, I guess I would say, from my personal philosophy, and fourteen months in, it's a great opportunity, and it helps our students, our families, our communities, and our volunteers, and we get a lot for that. I would, first, I have no idea what organization would be willing to take, I mean, it's, it's a big piece, not just the day that you have hundreds of people to do it, but the process. So, I mean, I don't know what the process would be, even to reach out to people to say, hey, do you want a huge fundraiser, but there's no money involved? Because we don't do it to raise any funds, it's, it's a, so, you know, our organizations often are tapped, so that would be one. But two, I think it belongs with us. Like, I think this is our, part of our mission is providing opportunities for all, and it helps our staff, I mean, on that day, our people giving of ourselves to our community, I think is a valuable piece. You know, if we get directions from the board, like you want us to change that focus, we could. But as I sit here and have the conversation, I don't really have an idea, uh, whether we just knock on the door of other philanthropy organizations, say, would you like to? And I, you know, we just haven't done that, and I, and I don't know if that's been a conversation that the board's had before, but that's just my opinion.
Kathy? Go down the line.
Thank you very much. So, um, I, I don't know if there is another organization that, that could do it or would ever want to take it over. I'd say that the district has a vested interest in it. We, there's, I don't know what the numbers are, but there's return on investment for kids that are fed, and, and it is in our best interest, our best interest, as an, an educational organization to help our community. And, uh, so, I really think that twenty-five thousand dollars in a budget this size is chump change. I do. I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about a multimillion-dollar budget, and, and we're quibbling over twenty-five thousand dollars, I just don't think it should be our priority. So, thank you.
Um, I have a lot of questions. So, first of all, I just wanna say, this is awkward for, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, I'm sure it's kinda awkward, so I just wanna let you know that any questions that are coming up are not any questions directed at certain individuals in this room, so just, I'm lightening the mood, because it, you know, it's hard to have those conversations when you've been the person doing the work. So, I would have, I think I would have liked to have had this conversation outside of this budget scenario, I don't know if that's appropriate, but it seems like, this is, like, there are a lot of questions that, like, here, we're just adding this in, and so, for me, it seems, why haven't we talked about this separately? And perhaps it's my own lack of experience in longevity in this seat, that doesn't understand the traditional way that positions are added, but I think that's why we're talking about a twenty-five thousand dollar, because we probably should have had this conversation and been looped in before we're approving a budget. My, my two cents. So, is this an hourly or salaried position?
It would most likely be an hourly position.
Okay. And so when, and I hear what you're saying, in light of the giant budget, but I'm also thinking about a brand-new kindergarten teacher, and how, what, what's, what's the salary we're paying a brand-new kindergarten teacher? So, I mean, and the, so I'm just thinking about how, if I was a teacher, and the amount of the extreme lifts that our teachers are doing, boy, Bags of Hope might, might seem like a really, I could get paid, you know, close to half of what I'm making, and not have to deal with a lot of stuff. So, that's why I'm gonna, I'm just gonna even the playing field, because it's, it's not twenty-five thousand dollars to a new teacher, that's, that's a lot of money. And I'm wondering if we have thought about additional funding opportunities, grants, to help support this? Community support to help pay for a position? Again, I am not an expert in a lot of things, so I don't really know what's possible, but I'm just, the fundraiser in me is thinking, okay, where can additional funding? We need, I have no doubt that we need to take this off of the person that's been doing this. I have questioned myself, like, was this even humanly possible? Because I know what I'm capable or not capable of is, is a person. So, I just am thinking about other ways that this could be funded, and without us stepping away from the involvement and control, but saying, like, white flag, hey, we, we, we need to raise fifty thousand dollars, but now we're gonna pay twenty-five thousand dollars to, so, how can we get better community support to run this effectively? Because what we've been doing is not the best for our district management. This is a really important project, we have to keep doing it. So, these are the thoughts I'm having.
Thank you.
I agree with what Kathy has said, but what I would like to know, as you know, I like to ask numbered questions, I'm the one that stretches out the meetings real well, because I can't figure out numbers. What percentage is twenty-five thousand dollars against the whole number? Is it, is it like zero, 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 one, seven? Do I do, or?
Yeah, I'm not that good, Commissioner Hanawell, to do that math in, in my head. You know, if you're asking, what is the impact on the mill rate of twenty-five thousand, I'm probably gonna say it's a penny.
Okay, yeah, that's all I, that, that's simplistic enough for me to understand. So we're asking everyone, our taxpayers, to pay a penny to support the Bags of Hope project in keeping it in the, in the school program.
You know, I, I would, not to prolong, but I guess I am the conversation in terms of, uh, you know, it's an annual budget. Right? So, the board does have the opportunity to choose whatever direction it wants, it's an annual budget. So if the board were to say, you know what, let's go ahead as presented, right, that affords us, if you will, time, right, to pursue whether there are other agencies out there, right, whether it's grant writing, whatever those opportunities are. Now, right, you also heard from Superintendent Holzman, who says, you know, it's, it's the school district of Janesville, right, we, we kinda own this, right? But it affords time, if you want that additional discussion, in terms of what is the district's role related to the Bags of Hope.
Here's my eighty-three cents.
Wow.
And that. I've been, been a part of, or parts of Bags of Hope when it wasn't even part of the school district. The school district took it over with GM when they went down. And some of those GM workers still help it, and that, they work hard at it. But if anyone has worked at Bags of Hope and looked at the beehive of people there, they're all over the place. And it's a tremendous thing for our students out there helping. They have smiles, they love doing it. Now, that being said, this does help our community, it helps some of our students in their family life, in their personal life of being able to help. And I look at all the fundraising throughout the community and that, and there's a strong thing. Denise has done one fantastic job, as I'm a former fundraiser, and helping in many charities, and that, or public groups, and I know the toughness of doing this. This is a thing for the, a potential budget for next year. It's gonna be, if we can make it work. But I also agree with others that would like to sit down and say, hey, is there another way to go? Very possible, maybe there is another way to go, but I don't wanna see Bags of Hope go away. And that's what we should do in the next year, set something up to sit down and have this discussion, talk with the community, talk with other people, and say, are we doing the best we can do for Bags of Hope? I'd like to see Bags of Hope grow and help more in the community, because there's a lot of people that aren't covered by Bags of Hope. A lot of people have problems. I've delivered to these homes, and I've looked at them. I wouldn't live in them, although I might have to, who knows? And they aren't doing it on purpose. They're so grateful, if you see the faces on them. So, I don't wanna make a bigger thing out of it than, than it is. But I'd, I'd like, it's, I'm okay with looking at, are there other options? And that. But, at the same time, let's not cut the base of the tree off and watch the tree fall. So, that's my part of it, I'm, I'm respecting others and what they might want, but I'm also with Kathy on it. Let's do it, and that.
Thanks for it.
Thank you.
So, I guess, I'm sorry, were you gonna say something? Go ahead.
I, I think it's important just, Liz asked a couple of questions. And one was positions, and how do they come to the board? And many positions are within the management under our administrative roles. So, they don't come to us. The only positions that come to us is the, in essence, the teaching staff and administrators. When there is a significant change in operational, whether it's a cabinet redesign or some redesign, that comes to us. So really, this is the place that we would have this conversation, maybe not necessarily on tonight, as we're looking at passing the budget. But this is the place we would have this debate, as we cut previously as positions have been cut. And as, cut and then added back. We really haven't tracked any of those things. So, I don't know, at, at another spot, and I know some people, because it was presented to the finance committee, and say it shouldn't have been presented at the finance committee. Well, I'm gonna say to my fellow commissioners, the presentation was at the finance committee. The memo and everything that was covered was in the packet for all of us to read. And so it was just shared, we asked, I think, some questions, but we didn't get into a debate, because it wasn't an ask, it was really, and I would not really get to a point of voting or anything, because it isn't for a committee to vote on. It's for the nine of us to dig in and ask questions. So I think it's very appropriate to have this conversation with the nine of us. So I hope that helps a little bit.
I think it is something that has come up multiple times recently, the questioning the board's role, not this position, other positions, and that surprise factor, and, so I think there probably are some nuanced conversations of how, what we all feel good about with that knowledge, versus, oh, okay, now we're deciding on this budget, but we don't really know what's the expectation of this, but we, we're, we're still having to decide, because we're voting on the budget. So, yes, we're not deciding, but we're still having to approve it. So, it's a, you know, but thank, I appreciate your, your assistance.
Thank you. Yeah, it does, it's, I will have a hard time supporting the role, not at all because of not spreading Bags of Hope, and we've all served it, I think, I'm sure. And when I show up on the right weekend, I'd serve even more. So, last year, when I'm like, Denise, where is everybody? And she's like, it's next week, Michelle, like, great, so great. I did, yeah, like, Liz, where is her? Anyway, I just, I mean, especially when we don't even have a vision of what that investment will compound the fundraising to be, so I will struggle with that as well, but not at all, again, because of the effort of its, you know, the concept of itself, so. All right, I think my computer died, so we're gonna go to five point two, let's just, okay. Thank you. Final discussion and consider adoption of the twenty-three, twenty-four school district budget, Mr. McCray.
That's all good?
I would like to move to accept the budget and adopt the, the budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school district, I'm sorry, school here, as presented.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the tax levy by twenty-five thousand dollars by removing the Bags of Hope position within Fund eighty.
I need you to help me talk to this, this is my first, I'll second that.
There's discussion.
And now discussion on the, the. Amendment.
Well, it's not an amendment. So you have, you have a motion and a second, and you have a second motion and a second. So, he didn't say amendment, so, are you wanting to amend?
My motion is to amend the budget to reduce tax levy by twenty-five thousand dollars by removing the Bags of Hope position within Fund eighty. Thank you.
No, and then we can just talk all year about how to make it better, or do something with the program. And I second it, so any discussion? Or do we, discussion on?
We have a discussion on the amendment.
On the amendment.
So then the expectation is that we would get more information about what's involved, what timeline, all of that, and then? And then, would it come back to us again? I mean, how does, how would that work? I mean, I think, like, I want to have a clear picture of, because what if, what if five months, somehow this conversation gets pushed forward? We have the clarity that we need to say, you know what, we're going to move forward. Let's just say. So then, then what?
So I understand the board's kind of wrestling through this. But from the superintendent's perspective, if you want me to come forward with positions in the area of about $25,000 or more, we have to change our policy. Because that's not what our policy says. Our policy specifically says that professional staff gets moved forward. Now, I understand this is a little unique. And I would also say that this isn't new. This is something that we've been talking about for at least two months now, right? Through the, so I understand the dilemma. But after I said, we have to, we as a board have to be really clear about what our expectations are. Is it this position or all positions? Right? Because we'd had conversations about another position that was reestablished from the administration, from a director to not a director. And there was 100% agreeance, but it's no different because we have a new position now, but nobody's, right? Because it was cost savings, I think, to the people's thought process. So I just want us to be real careful about, we, we have a policy. Our policy says how we hire positions, specifically the board's role. It doesn't really establish how they should come forward to the board. And I'm just saying with 1,500 employees, you have to be really cautious about how often you want the administration to bring, whatever we call it, new employees. We've got to define that. Because we do that on a regular basis the entire year.
Thanks. So I, I am not going to support the amendment. I think you knew that. My concern is that if we don't do this, a couple of things happen. Either we try to find someone else who will take it on for nothing within the district and we just impose it on somebody else, or it falls back on Denise's shoulders. My biggest fear is that it eventually kills Bag of, Bags of Hope. And this, I got to tell you that when I talk about Janesville to other people, I talk about Bags of Hope. I talk about what the Janesville School District does or what Janesville as a community does. And I think it's incredibly important. I think it's, I think it's good for our kids and that's what we should be always about. And yeah, we might be able to, you know, get a kindergarten teacher, half of a kindergarten teacher for that, 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 that serves 20 kids. Right? But think of all the hundreds of people that we serve.
Wasn't debating that.
Right? I know, I know.
Wasn't debating that.
But I'm just trying to give some perspective. Because we're really, I mean, honestly, the one cent on the levy that this, you know, that it might reduce the levy by one cent per person? I don't, I really believe the people of Janesville are willing to donate a cent to feed kids at Christmas. And so those are the reasons why I cannot support the amendment. If we find somebody who can do this better, I, fine. But right now, I think that we got kids in need. We can do this. We've proven we can do this. We are good at it. We've got an infrastructure in place and an expert right here in front of us who can help, you know, guide the next person that, that does it. Because, you know, she's not going to be with us forever. She's going to retire sometime.
You don't talk that.
I know.
Don't kidding.
But you know what I mean? It's like, this is a, this is a huge, this is an investment in our kids. And I don't think it costs us that much. So, thank you.
Again, I think this is a, as Kathy pointed out, this is a community effort. One of the things that I think people might not know, or maybe they did, two years ago when we did the orientation for all our new staff and we took four, four buses, I think, was it four buses that, here? One of the stops was a Dollar General. And one of the discussions was about the school district's involvement in Bags of Hope. And I think, I, I think, I want to reiterate what Kathy is saying. That's, that's a [inaudible]. I mean, if, if it was important enough for us to tell our new employees that here's this program that's been in existence, you know, you can be part of it. I, I just think for a penny, you know, I'd find it hard to believe that people would say, nah, let, let somebody else do it. Because it, it does involve so many different groups, students. Last year, we had a couple of, of ex-board members there, ex-school board members that were actually there for part of the day. So there's, there's a value there, so.
You know what? I don't want to belabor this anymore. It is $25,000 and no one is disputing the value of Bags of Hope whatsoever. So actually, I'm going to call the vote for the amendment. And, what? What did you want me to do?
I wanted to say, you can't do that. As president, you can do whatever, but you.
What do you want to do? Listen to more debate on $25,000?
Whether we like it or not.
Yeah.
That is why we're here.
Sure, sure.
At least let every commissioner have a voice.
Jim, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, thank you. And I don't care about the $25,000 or pennies. What I'm going to say is, being on the Bags of Hope since its beginning, since we took it over from GM, part of the reason it should always be with the school district is because we have to use our counselors and our social workers so they can figure out the kids that need the food and the parents that need it and everything. So that's why it could never probably go to someone else, because they don't have what they need to find out. And I'm sure we wouldn't certainly let them delve into it, because it's way too personal. So, thank you. Short.
Thank you. Right, and good point. And I, but I guess I was just going to say, I feel like maybe what we're trying to sum up is, the way that this was handled, it is, was just not, is well thought through. Because I really think it should have come to us, hey, we want to spend $25,000, but then that person, they're going to raise 75,000 or 100,000 first year. Do you know what I mean? Like, I feel like the planning was not at all thought through. Like it would have, and then it would have, yes, be in a new role. And I do have a, I've done a request, I talked to Commissioner Paul about already, I want PPC to look at the policy and practice around new roles that come to the board. Again, maybe it's just a practice, you know, so we aren't surprised by some things. So, can I call the vote now? All right, we're going to do, the amendment.
I'd like to say something, because I think I said part of it before, as such. It's in the budget. I'd like to leave it in the budget for this year. Step up and take that position. I hope somebody would. But I also think, parallel to this, we do have what could be done or if somebody wants to come forward.
Sure.
But I don't want to alter the budget. And it isn't a penny, it's less than a penny in that $25,000. So I want people to know that. Do it.
Yeah, okay.
We'll do it with what we have in the budget. And we can, next year, in advance, during the year, we can work on things to say, is there another way of doing this? Or can we support it better?
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close discussion. We'll do a, we're voting on the amendment. To remove the $25,000 from the budget as appro, as presented tonight. All those in favor, or, no. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, wait, remove?
Yeah.
Correct.
So I think I heard two ayes.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Aye.
Okay. That fails, the amendment fails, seven, two. So we're back to the original motion made by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Hanawal. Any discussion on that? Sorry, go ahead.
I, I do agree with you. I think the way, I think there's so much discussion is because of how it was presented. So I do really like the fact that you're going to make us look as PPC as to how these roles come in. Because maybe I am ignorant, Mark, maybe I don't know what the policy is, so maybe that's a great lesson for me. Because I don't, again, Bags of Hope, wonderful thing. I just, maybe it'll make us, maybe this is a lesson for all of us to get better educated as to what that policy is so that this doesn't happen again. But I would like, if we're, you know, just failed the amendment, if we keep the $25,000 in there, I would like to charge the administration to find grants. Because this is such a wonderful event. I cannot see how either the Janesville Foundation, the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin would not support this effort with a grant or other opportunities that we could research. So I, I would just like to, I mean, those are two grant opportunities right off the top of my head. But I know that there are others that will help support, fund a position to help this issue that we're talking about. Yes?
For Bags of Hope, we do apply to all of those grants. I mean, and that's grants to help fund Bags of Hope. So I'm, I'm just saying that it's not something that we haven't been doing. And we've, the Steve Stricker Foundation, Forward Janesville, Blackout Community Credit Union, we, we do apply for all those grants. I don't know that you'll find a grant that will supplant the position, I guess is what I'm saying. I just wanted to put that out there for you, that we do that.
I understand that, but it wasn't not the Janesville Foundation that supported an early literacy staff person?
No.
I'm off my rocker, then?
I, I would never say that.
Okay, well, maybe I'm off my rocker. That's okay, I said it, so I'm, I'll remove that from the minutes. Okay. So maybe I just had that in error. I, I think there are other opportunities that fund those types of positions within this, this great event.
Sorry, I really appreciate everybody's patience on this. So we're back to the original motion to approve the budget as presented, has a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being patient. But good discussion. I mean, that's what we're here for. So thank you for, yeah, again, nobody would ever question the value of Bags of Hope at all, for the whole community. Discussion and consider approval of 2324 school year tax levy, Mr. McCray.
Oh, that information is presented in your packets. It's a specific memo for your consideration.
Motion made by Millard, seconded by Myers. I did hear Kathy first. I heard her first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, discussion.
So are we voting on the memo?
The levy, yeah.
As opposed to, yeah, I just was saying, I, I think we actually have to specify the numbers.
You know, I'm not a great reader, so, so consider a motion to adopt the October 24th, nope, that's the budget, where are we at? Right here?
Right here.
Okay.
Got to do that one.
To adopt the 2324 school tax levy in the amount of $50 million 227,800 and to specify $6 million 858,789 to be levied as a direct irre, irreappealable? Okay. Tax for the sole purpose of paying Dan McCr, oh, no, I'm sorry. The principal and the interest on the district's long-term debt obligations. I had to mess that up, you know that. Sorry.
Now we can call. Any, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes nine zeros, well, thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. All right, item six, FBG committee report, Mr. Argry.
I think we've covered most of the committee. Let's see, we were just about an hour and a half or so. So, hey, we're getting close to committee meeting. No, actually, a couple, one thing I really did want to point out, as we look at really what's next from a long-range facility planning. So coming up next month, we'll get a general overview of, here's the process. Here's the process that they went through, they being EUA as the architect, JP Cullen as a construction, I'll say advisor, Points of Beginning as a civil and construction advisor. Then next, in December, we'll go to the next level of detail to really start to dig in. And ultimately, in January, as we talk strategic planning and long-range facility planning, we'll have the whole package and then have a robust four, five, six-hour meeting.
Nice.
Well, maybe that'd be a workshop, but. And really, that was everything else from a committee standpoint we've already talked about. So, thank you.
All right, future meeting dates and times. Denise?
The PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, November 6th, at 4:30 PM here at the Educational Services Center. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, November 14th, at 6:00 PM, also here at the ESC. And then the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will meet on Tuesday, November 21st, at 4:00 PM here at the ESC.
Thank you. And board requests, I only have one, and again, I talked to Commissioner Paul about it. And with that, I'm going to enter in the meeting. Thank you, guys. Yes, Van?
Game seven on right now?
It is.
Oh, yes. Anzur was right there.
Hopefully the Diamondbacks are in already.
Anzur was right there. She is still does a lot of, she told us and I went to argue with her, yeah. Oh, 100%. She might not be the one who does.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great pork.
Oh, that's helpful, yeah.
I had a tent at the beginning of the year, so.